Who else is saying this?
I look alright, I got hat hair?
I don't think anybody really cares, Carlos.
Thanks, you always know what to say.
We're guys, we don't care what.
Okay, let's go ahead and get started, it's five o'clock. And today is October twenty ninth, two thousand nineteen, the time is now five P M. The work session, city council is in progress. We have a few items, five items for discussion, one of those are two are Noah's Ark, three is marijuana third quarter resolution, fourth is a discussion of twenty twenty budget, and five, discussion of sale or transfer of city property, and six is just discussion of possible agenda items. So, let's go ahead and get started with the first item, which is Noah's Ark. Uh, Mike, what do you have for us?
Sure.
And you move, council, and everyone, thanks for coming. What I wanted to do with this, we've been working with Noah's Ark to try and come up with solutions for shortfall. Before we get to that, they provided some information in the packet, and I gave you kind of their floor plan and design. But before we get there, I wanted to give you, have Tom give you an update on where we are with the shell and what's taking place there, um, so, if you'll mind Tom kind of, uh...
That's fine. Let me just, I'm trying to hear if everybody's... Uh, mayor, council, members of public. As you know, as you've seen the building, the Noah's Ark building, we are, according to recent payouts, it's eighty-two percent complete, all we're lacking at the moment is the stucco. When the building was first designed back in eighteen, it was designed as a metal building. And, of course, we looked at that and it just didn't seem to work out right. So, we went to a C M U block building with a stucco finish, that was in March of nineteen. And we signed the contract with the contractor for that building. That, that was signed in March, March thirty, I believe it was, by council and approved by council. The plans were not finished, and that was signed by council. When the plans were finished, there were some additional things that we adopted. One, because of the adoption of the city by the twenty eighteen building code, requiring higher energy levels and energy conservation levels, and also some other items. We actually got the revised plans in the original specification book in late April, after the contract had been signed. So, to date, the original contract is four hundred eighty-one thousand sixty dollars. To date, we received change orders for eighty-two thousand dollars. The total is five hundred sixty-three thousand dollars, five hundred sixty-three nine forty-one to be exact. That's a seventeen point two percent increase in change orders. Some of those, we've had ten change orders, seven of them have been actual increases, three of them have been decreases due to items that we've negotiated back and forth. The biggest one is the stucco system that we put on the building. The stucco system was recommended and almost required by our architects, H G F, predominantly to maintain weather tightness with the building and to make the building still be there in fifty years, because of the stucco system that we use. They were very concerned with woodpeckers and water infiltration, both of which have been addressed seriously in this building. So, we're at that point, as you can see, we've got scaffolds up, we're ready to put scaffolding on, or, excuse me, the stucco on, as soon as the snow stops, which will probably be April or so at this point. Hopefully not, but as soon as we can get on, get going on, we will. One of the reasons that the stucco was so much more, the largest change order, was in the original quote, we had a stucco allowance of fifty thousand dollars. And that was from a local contractor who was, it was a local subcontractor, as they call it. The local subcontractor tried to do the stucco, to supply the stucco system, but he was unable to. He was unable to both physically do the work that was required according to the drawing, once the drawings were finalized, and he couldn't do the, uh, he couldn't finance it. He wanted the city to finance it, and he told him at that point, no, we can't do that, we can't bring your money upfront to allow this to happen. So, that's the biggest reason for the increase in the stucco.
How much did the stucco end up costing, about the fifty?
Um, fifty, a hundred and four, is what it is.
Is that conventional stucco or is that an Astoric?
Yes.
Yes.
Excuse me. It is, it is a wrap on the concrete block with Jumbo Tex, two layers of Jumbo Tex. There's a two inch polyiso, there's a special Z metal that's two and three quarters of an inch thick that will take in the two inch iso, polyiso, and the three quarters stucco, which is the standard, the old style system, scratch and brown, but then it's an Astoric finish. So, and with Crackmaster embedded in the scratch and brown. So, not only is there a heavy duty three point four metal lap, which is the heaviest metal lap that I could find today looking at, underneath, then the two coats of stucco, then the Crackmaster underneath that. This is to prevent the woodpecker infiltration, which I will tell you, we got to my house this year. But, we don't want that with all the, we want this building to be there in seventy-five years, at this point in time. I'm more than willing to answer, try to answer any questions that you have, any concerns.
No questions.
So, sir, listen.
Yeah, I did, there's a footnote right below the thing that doubles up to seven hundred and twelve thousand. So...
Oh, that's, that's not mine.
That's gonna be Noah's Ark, and they're gonna kind of come up here and kind of explain that. This is, what we're talking about is what the city provided for the shell. So, five hundred sixty-three thousand dollars for the shell of the building that we have there. I don't know if you have any more questions for Tom, that we can ask Noah's Ark to come up. They've provided their estimate, their, basically, their finances, where they need to fall short and...
Mike, that, you know, we, the money that we put forward, and what he was talking about, the additional expense, is that something that the city is going to have to put forward?
We had four hundred thousand for the, uh, the shell, and a hundred thousand from the sale of the, uh, old city garage. So, we, we've got, we had to come up with an extra sixty-three thousand dollars.
So, have we done that, or is that something that's gonna be in our proposed budget?
We did it out of the C I P, I believe, out of C I P municipal buildings.
Nineteen nineteen or twenty twenty?
Twenty. Nineteen nineteen.
Twenty. Twenty nineteen.
Twenty nineteen.
Nineteen nineteen. Sorry.
Or nineteen maybe.
Yeah. Um, I don't know, Debbie, you know, tell them the both, or what's your take?
Yeah, really good.
Um, mayor and city council, we met with you, um, two weeks ago, or a couple months ago, and you have some questions and concerns, um, that we couldn't answer at that time. So, hopefully, the information in the packet has answered some of those questions, and then we are here to answer anything else, um, that you have a question on. We are here to ask your consideration to match the funds that we have for the interior completion of the building. We have on hand three hundred and forty-seven thousand eight hundred and eighteen dollars.
Do you want me to add one again?
Three hundred and forty-seven thousand eight hundred and eighteen. Um, that does not add up to seven hundred and twelve thousand, but we will make up, somehow we will make up anything above and beyond that, because there are a few things, um, as you see underneath that estimate that are not included in there.
What do you estimate those are gonna cost?
Um, I don't know yet. That even is just an architect's estimate, and until we have concrete bids, you know, some of those will be less and some will be more, so that's our best guess right there. Um, I wanted to address grants, because we, um, we were asked about grants. We had investigated seventy-five possible sources of funding. Most of these, vast majority, did not fund capital projects. Uh, some needed the building specs in place, which we do finally have now. And some required the completion of the shell and having it handed over to us before we could apply for anything. We have two possible, um, kind of good sources for funding afterward. USDA for equipment, because we would be treated as a tenant and we could apply, uh, for it as a remodeling, um, expenditure. In order to do that, we would need a long-term lease and a contract to provide services, which I believe is in, um, is underway right now. Um, A A F, Animal Assistance Foundation, they were supposed to meet with us Thursday, last Thursday, but they canceled due to weather. We will be meeting with them after the first of the year, but, uh, that again, we have to have, um, the building turned over to us before we can, uh, apply for that. And those are for equipment and, um, surgical supplies and things like that. It's not capital funding. Uh, we will continue to seek funding and continue to try to decrease the costs without compromising the quality of construction. Um, this has been in the planning for almost twenty years. Uh, the reason we need to expedite the completion is because the current location was never meant as a shelter. Um, it compromises the health and safety of staff, animals, and public, and it is not A D A compliant. We have a budget of approximately four hundred thousand dollars per year. Of that, the city, um, in cash gives us twenty-five thousand, which is six percent of our budget. Um, we provide the service to the city three hundred and sixty-five days per year, including days like this, Christmas, New Year's, Fourth of July, doesn't matter. If the, if the shelter says it's closed, it means it's closed to the public. It's not closed for people to go in there and take care of the animals, they go there no matter what. Um, this is a one-time investment in a city building, and we believe you will recoup your investment in less than a year. We employ twelve people, and with the budget we have, we believe that we are saving the city over three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, providing the service we do. So, over three years, that's well over a million dollars. And that's why I believe that our request, um, respectfully, um, is not out of, out of bounds. So, are there any questions?
Thank you for going in. How much, how much is the Animal Assistance Foundation? Is there a maximum allowable for, um, that and the USDA grant?
The USDA is probably fifty, I believe the maximum, yeah. Animal assistance, I'm, I'm not sure what that would be. I think they would have to see the specs and, and see what we'd be asking for before they could answer that.
Yeah, a lot of times in these grants, they'll show a maximum amount of what they could possibly give.
Mm-hmm.
And of course, we're up to that point, so that would be something to try and get a hold of this to see what that...
At one time, I believe they said it was a hundred thousand, but they said at this point, right now, they're up to their eyeballs in grant requests. So, ours would be after the first of the year, hopefully, when we have a better chance.
So, it would be a new, that would be their new year after the first of the year, or they run on...
They have an ongoing cycle, but yeah, it would be, um, we wouldn't be crowded in with the list of the ones they have now.
So, the grants you're anticipating will fund the footnote, then it aren't included in your data?
We're hoping they will fund a lot of that, but, um, as we all know, grants aren't guaranteed.
No, understood, but it's, you think it's been starting to...
Yeah, we're hoping to do so for, um, whatever else was unforeseen, or anything on the outside, um, like lighting or, um, landscaping, sidewalks, things like that.
And is that seven, twelve, six hundred total numbers, or anything that can be maybe whittled away at to save some other additional costs?
We're hoping to cut down on some of that, we're, uh, hoping we'll get some in-kind donations or, um, donations of materials from, uh, vendors.
Okay, so that's not really a, a number that's...
It's, it's the architect's estimate.
Okay.
But we always try to get, you know, to...
Volunteers or something like that, where you have contractors coming doing some time?
Sure, yeah. And just case in point, um, the estimate we got from the architect services from H G F was a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. The architect we have now, um, is capped at fourteen thousand dollars.
So, these are just architect figures, we haven't gone out to seek, uh, to...
No, we haven't done bids, certainly.
Go ahead, you have to speak to them now.
Um, I would think that we would have to have the building in hand to do that.
To get bids?
Yeah.
Mike, did I be correct?
Well, um, in order to get a contractor to, to look at this and, and put bids together and take the time to, to bid that, I think Noah's Ark would have to have some kind of, uh, you know, uh, commitment that they're gonna do this. Um, I don't, I don't know that we have to have, they'd have to have the building, you know, we'd allow contractors to walk through, take measurements, um, that, that type of thing, but, yeah. So, the architect's opinion of probable cost at seven hundred and twelve, the original from H G F was over...
One point two?
Two million?
One point two.
Right. Um, they've, they've done their best to whittle it down and to, you know, come within a reasonable number. What's reasonable? They spent five hundred sixty-three on the shell and, um, they're looking at seven hundred thousand for interior. It's just the cost of, of building these days. So, if, you know, for some reason that council cannot, does not want to come up with that three forty-seven, or maybe just a portion of, do you have a plan or a game plan for the difference?
We'd have to stay where we are as long as we don't have to move, as long as we can't finish it.
I don't see that as an option, because the city doesn't even own that building anymore, only by the good graces of Mr. Trina, is the animal shelter there anymore.
Um...
The big, the big question would be, yes, will we refund it for now?
And how soon would the money be needed? Within six months, a year? Half upfront, half at the end? Installments?
We'd have to budget it in twenty twenty, yeah. In order to just, to get a contractor in there, um, I don't know if... Has, has the architect given you a timeframe of what it would take to do this? Do you have to tell a number of days at it?
Um, not that I don't know.
Okay. So, you know, the only, the only place that I could see where we could get friends from, um, would be from our marijuana friends or city projects. Um...
It's a big chunk.
It's a big chunk, so, but it would have to cut back. I'm not sure what anticipated, uh, items that we're planning on twenty twenty for that, uh, portion that we allow for projects.
So, that would be the, that would be something I need to be to look at.
Right. Well, our, uh, what's arrows pulled up is the C I P projected in, uh, under municipal buildings, we've kind of carried, from our five-year, uh, plan, we've kind of carried those through, um... So, you can see that... What was that? Can I make some of that? Yeah.
My concern with taking money from the actual capital portion of that is that, you know, other projects that we have, that we want to do in the city, you know, street repairs and this other stuff, of that, that's the concern that I have.
Understood.
With that, taking money from the, the actual C I P.
Well, and, uh, without, um, mentioning this too much, we will find out next Tuesday if it's still there, the C I P.
Right.
So...
Mm-hmm. You've got one more year to work on it, but...
Yeah, in case it doesn't.
Let me ask you a question, Gavin, a shelter question. Are, is the shelter board firmly committed to giving that money and putting that money into the interior of that building?
Yes. We could write a check today.
Because what I'm thinking is, if we can do it with marijuana money, why don't we use the shelter's money to start the project and then allocate half of it in second quarter and half of it in the third quarter for marijuana money, that way the hit's not that. And by that time, maybe the shelter will have, um, more grant money where those monies could be lower, suggestion, it's just a suggestion.
Yeah, but I don't think the grant is gonna cover the capital outlets in the seventh block.
But what I'm saying is, okay, let's, let's figure the seven twelve. That, half, the shelter is committed to half of that, which is what they've given sixty so. They've got the money cash in the hand. Why can't they start with their money, putting their money into the project? We allocate money in the second and third quarters of the marijuana...
No, that I understand, I thought you said that they might also raise additional grants.
I'm sorry, I don't understand what you're trying to say.
I think I see what you're saying. She was mentioning earlier that they have a harder time getting capital improvement grant dollars from the granting agents, and you're suggesting that they might be able to get granting dollars for capital improvements?
No, what I'm saying is, get the grant, okay, say, if they're committed three sixty, whatever, three hundred and sixty, just to even it out. They're, they're committed to the three hundred and sixty thousand, okay? However, whatever grant money they don't, they have or don't have, they're gonna spend that money on the interior of the shelter. If by the time that the city has to give them money for the completion of the interior of the building, maybe grant money will be given to them, where they don't have to ask for that money on the second or third pull, the first and second pull from the city is what I'm seeing. If they're committing, if they're committing that money to that project, then whatever extra money that they get from grants will...
Would be less than from our coffers.
Right, so...
Grants or fundraising or anything like that, you know? We're constantly trying to raise more money. Uh, there's a lot that they have up there on, uh, Moore's Canyon, and it's for sale, but, you know, who knows? They don't wanna give it away, so, it might sell right away, which would, maybe a hundred thousand, I don't know, that would reduce the cost.
And a lot is really close to a boosting part.
Sure is.
So...
I mean, in terms of its marketability as compared to last year.
Right.
Now, earlier on, did I understand that you, there was some reservation about spending your resources that were necessary for operation, and is what, is we, is what's being proposed interfere with that?
No, our operating account is separate from this.
My pardon, thank you.
Just to give you, just to give you my information, because I was on the board at the time, that there's restrictive funds, and that, that's what they're, they're, uh, giving to the project is the restrictive funds. When, when I left the board three years ago, we only had the amount of money Mrs. Pierce gave us for those two houses that she donated, and since I've left the board, they garnered that two hundred and twenty and three hundred and sixty. And that's pretty impressive. Because, and that's out of just small...
Thank you. Something else, I mean, I don't think this will happen, but, uh, one thought that may really keep in mind is, you know, if we were to, you know, fund, like you mentioned, half first quarter, and keep in the back of our mind for the balance of the year, and I don't think that our marijuana funding for twenty twenty is probably going to just fall out of the sky.
No.
But just in case it does, is there a possibility that we might have to go out and get a loan of some kind, fund that, and I just want, that would be, not one I don't wanna do, but that's something that, just a thought, just in the back of my mind, but...
Aside from that, or we have to go to a bondish, you know, initiative and put some holders in?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I like your idea about, you know, utilizing those funds in quarter two and quarter three. Um, I think one of the things that, and this, this is just something I have to say, 'cause I feel this way, if we do this, considering how much has already been allocated for the center, you know, you may have conversations from other future council members saying, well, maybe that twenty-five thousand dollars that we've been allocating to you over the next, or the past years may not be available as, as easily as it has been. So, please keep that in mind, that someone may bring that up in future years. And that, that may be even brought up in our discussions now for twenty twenty, because if we're gonna commit these funds and then to give you an additional twenty-five thousand dollars still on top of that for your operational necessities, it, it's harder to, to spill that one out to the public when you're giving them this much, plus you've already given them five hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars for the shell, and granted, you provide a great service for the community, for the animals, et cetera, but we have to be able to rationally state that back to the people and other agencies that come and ask for funding. So, please be just aware that that may mean a challenge.
I understand, but the, but the only thing is, if we didn't do it, you would have to do it.
I understand it, and like I stated, you do provide a valuable, you know, service to the community, but when it comes to the numbers, that's what people are gonna see, and they come to us when they say that. Not everyone has the same passion for animals as you all do. Granted, I, I see the necessity for it, but not everyone else does, and it just...
Carlos, you can't, you can't, it's, the, the scene has changed, the circumstances have changed. It's not humane treatment of animals. That's, that's what the shelter brings into the city, that there's humane treatment of those animals.
I agree.
Okay, wait, I'm not finished, I'm not finished. It's mandated by state law that we have safety. If this is a public safety issue, just as the police department, fire department, granted, they're not as important, but it's an aspect of what the city has to provide, their citizens. What you gotta understand too, the federal law just, federal, s- changed the law to where now it's, if animal cruelty is a federal offense.
I, I'm not saying we're gonna be cruel to them, I'm just saying that...
No, 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 I said, but you got, okay, but you, you, you either...
I'm just saying that we're gonna be much funding to go around.
But, 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 this change I have discussed, I mean, that, that's something I understand what you're coming from and...
But but just just change that discussion, that because that's uh something I understand what you're coming from before, and I think they probably understand that. But I wanna get back to this initial amount, and the only thing I would like to say is that if we were to grant this, when we're shaped forward with it done, I just don't want to see you coming back and saying we need another twenty five, another fifty, or a hundred thousand dollars. You know, this is it.
Where the bids can not.
Yeah, yeah, well, that's the thing, I think that we stick to.
Or you have more change, right?
I think we start, I think we stick to this number here, and then you guys are gonna figure out that difference, if there's any, that's.
Yeah, well, you you've been in construction your whole life, you realize that this is an architect's estimate.
I do.
Right.
I've talked to Carl Gabriel Gibson, and he knows what this thing, he said, a six thousand square foot building start to finish, national average, two point eight million, what they cost. And due to uh Tom and Kent and Mike and everybody else, and the we've reduced the cost as much as we can. And I don't, it doesn't matter, because you have your budget and everything else, but uh and uh we've been involved now. We just mentioned that uh the architect, we save probably close to a hundred and thirty thousand, and then working with Kent, the building is a class B, so we don't have to sprinkle it with the sprinklers. So that saves about seventy grand there, so we're looking at ways to save it, but we don't wanna come back. The last thing I wanna do is come back and ask, but we don't know what the bids can be. You understand?
Well, and the thing that we as council is that if we were to put total amount close to seven, eight hundred thousand dollars into this project, and you come back to us again in another three, four months to say I need another hundred thousand or whatever, that's something that we have to sell to the public.
Right.
And that's where we, that's the part that we struggle with, I just want you to understand.
I'm not on the board. My vision is if you give us this money, and with the money that we have, get as much done as we can, if it's over, then stop the completion wherever it is and move in. And then raise money for the future, not from the city, but from wherever other funds we have, so that, you know, so, I mean, you're an expert, but you know, the major costs are mechanical, plumbing, electrical. And if we do that, uh and put the floor in, that blows through all our money probably. But you can't piece that, you know, those are the things that have to be done, the whole. And then, you know, we we can save a little bit, we eliminated one bathroom, it still made it ADA compliant. The original architect had three, so that's probably around twenty thousand saved. And uh but the walls and everything else and the interior finish uh is from the money that we're requesting from you guys.
Hey, Mike, and uh, you know, I I know that the last time we talked about, and that's not, I don't think, been finalized. This is part of the conversation today is turning over the building to Lozark. Uh, and are there any issues with that, Esther?
I like a long-term lease better than just leaving it over to to them. Um, we have to leave that in a in a piece of property, we have to plow it out. I'm just thinking off the cuff right now, so um.
You have to put it up for you, wouldn't you? We couldn't just sell it to one person with that open.
I think uh. Well, that's part of the part of the discussion, but then this is, this is a municipal building, really. The dog shelter uh becomes a municipal building, and that's where you have to go out to the board of the people to sell it. So, and again, I don't know if.
I mean.
I think so is not, it's be more probable.
And and I think it's more probable to have a long-term lease than, and there are some uh granting uh grant funding agencies that will accept a long-term lease rather than complete ownership, so.
We discussed that in the last meeting.
Yeah, so.
And even if we were to sell it, as you argumentated, it was jointly funded. And, you know, they have a finite interest in this.
Right.
So it, the complexities of transferring ownership or changing ownership to anything other than a long-term lease just become real cumbersome and and convoluted.
Couldn't there be something just like a first letter refusal offered to them, since they have a financial interest in that, doesn't it?
Well, they probably would have a fixed price purchase option, they could do that at the end of the lease, huh?
Say like, what, ten years, twenty years, something?
Then what are you gonna do with the animal shelter?
I'm sorry?
If you sell the property, what are you gonna do?
You still have to provide the animal shelter.
You still have to provide an animal shelter.
Right, so.
In in a total scheme of things.
You know, you're talking legal questions, and you've got the man sitting back there like this, like cheap sit bull. And I think he has some answers or or something he could help us with or direct us with.
Well, I I don't think it's a decision that is up to me. I do think a long-term lease makes sense. And, you know, if you were going to to sell the building for for whatever reasons you may have, there could be a lien at the time of the sale, I just, but but all that, I think, is gonna possibly, um, just me thinking out loud, possibly overthinking it right now. It makes more sense to have a long-term lease, I think, with Lozark. It might, the off-the-cuff opinion as well, but but I think that absolutely makes more sense.
And that's what we would prefer.
Several things come to mind as we've been talking, and the last time I I had occasion to be at the uh the dog pound. Okay, how does that change, it's an animal shelter, it is, is are we building like the college hall of animal shelters here?
I don't think so.
But you you had mentioned, uh, however many hundreds, or thousands, square foot buildings, like two billion dollars?
Yeah, six thousand, the national average for an animal shelter.
To serve the purposes that we want it to be, an animal shelter.
That's what the cost of construction is.
How does this animal shelter affect your, the services that you are going to provide? More animals, greater staff, obviously a safer and more sound location. Um, it has, and of course, regulated by ADA, et cetera, restaurants and and all that sort of thing, but I can't remember what you're able to do where you are, as compared to what you might be able to do where you're going. Can you make some correlation for me?
Um, well, it will be safer, it won't be a hazard to the health of anybody. Um, we'll probably have running water, which they don't have in two out of the three buildings down there. The sewer hopefully will back up. Um, it won't be as easy to break into or dump animals at. Um, it it's specified by law how much room you have to have for each dog and each cat. And then there will be isolation rooms for dogs and cats, because that eliminates spreading disease, you know, throughout the whole, the whole.
Right, and how how many animals could there to give?
Um, last year, in twenty eighteen, we took in sixteen hundred and seventy-five dogs and cats.
Will the new facility?
It could serve more, yeah, sometimes we're just, you know, we're just overloaded.
Can it even do that much or more? Right.
And um the ways that we generate income a lot is from adoption fees,
Right.
um, city licensing fees, transfer fees, um, and that will increase the income that we get. Um, but they won't be, you know, they won't have to go outside to clean the kennels if it's bad weather. Um, it's just, I mean, the place that we have now, to put it kindly, is just inadequate.
If you've ever been down there in the mornings.
No, in a really long time.
It is really, the stench is in the mornings when they before they clean. But the Department of Agriculture, who oversees this, uh, like she said, there's different areas of the shelter. You have to have an isolation for sick dogs and an isolation for sick cats, and then you have, so they have to have their own heating system. And then they have the, every so often, they have what they call an air dump, in other words, they condition the air and take the the air out and bring in fresh air every so many minutes or hours. And uh so, right now, what they are, if you've been down there, especially in the cat house, it is.
Totally inappropriate, I apologize. But you know, we've come a long way. I I grew up together with them, remember the first house we had? Didn't have indoor plumbing, you know, and I'll go try it on a day like today, you don't waste a hell of a lot of time out there, you know, so, but uh.
Anyway, you know, that's going, uh, I I think when you know the direction you have to go, um, we're attached to a situation, either or. Either don't fund it and it doesn't go anywhere, or we fund it and finish it out. So I think, Mike, I think uh the direction, you're gonna take this to the directors' meeting and see where and how the funding will come from. And then you'll get back to council.
We almost don't have a choice to to continue to fund it, Mike.
We have.
Begging the question, did we not do adequate planning at the beginning, or was it kinda haphazard and and a marriage and development? Here we are with a baby, you know what I'm saying, and we gotta take care of it, you know, I don't know, but nonetheless, here we are, yeah.
One other thing I might say, we do have um room sponsorships for the new shelter, if anybody wants to fund a room. Um, it starts at five thousand, goes up to thirty. If you know of anybody with money they don't know what to do with, just send them our way. I mean, we're trying everything under the sun. Plus, we are taking all the furniture we now have, or we're gonna get it from the thrift store, there's kind of, there will be no new furniture and no new computers unless we absolutely need them.
I uh recently bought a book that talks about quotes from Medal of Honor of Honor of Honor. And one of them that sticks in my mind, I can't remember the guy who said it, he says, "There is no bravery in heroics. It's just seeing what needs to be done and doing it." And somehow there's a wisdom in there that applies here in my.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And we will continue to look at different options or.
Thanks, John.
Okay, not the odds, either two murals, what do we got with this, man? So uh I see Penny here, the the Main Street group, and I should let Penny speak to this, but they they received a grant to to do this, and um so there's one area approved, and there's been talk of more areas. And before we start doing murals everywhere, I wanted to to have Penny come forward and kinda explain. You just have one uh picture in your packet, so Penny, if you just wouldn't mind.
Yes. Yes.
Penny, before you get started, I know that this came up in one of our council work sessions, we made some time back when I know there was one of one or two councils people, a little bit concerned about murals and the numbers and murals.
Yeah, they're they're talking to the community of of doing several, and so.
And we all be known as the mural community, or exactly what, so I think that's.
Right. And I, so I think arts and culture is uh.
This is rich with arts and culture, and we're collaborating with them.
Yes.
So the only mural project that Main Street is involved with at this moment in time is the one that you have in your packet. And we we got a matching grant from DOLA for twenty five hundred dollars. And we're gonna, we wanna have six local artists, one will get each one of the, it's about four by eight murals, and we wanted to have each one of the, each one of the murals be one of the festivals that we have in town. And it's gonna be on Susan Palmer's building, which is across from Bricks, next to the tire store. And it's a big, pink, ugly building, and we thought, oh, and it's painted already, so we're not gonna be covering any historic brick.
We're not exactly on that next to DTE.
No, that's, the thing is that, he's. Let me think on that.
Okay. So, that's what, that's what our plan is, and I went to a conference two weeks ago in Granby, and they had Rocky Mountain mural digs. It was like a whole week, and they hired ten muralists, and they came in, and they made eleven different murals all around town. Now they have a mural tour. So basically, Main Street is just, has this one that we're that we're working on right now. And there's something that we're talking about with the back of Safeway and in collaboration with tourism that will be on that big, long, white wall on Main Street behind Safeway, so.
Are these gonna be anything like the Girls Love Flowers murals?
No.
Okay, I'm not a huge fan.
So this, so we have, we have one submission so far, and this what, this is what she was thinking about, but it's gonna, it would be like four by eight. So that would show like the San Fe trails. And then we would have one that would be Trinidadio, and one that would be Fourth of July with baseball players and fireworks on it. So, and we're really trying to stick with local artists. We haven't, we haven't got all six of them yet, so. But it's four by eight, yes.
How how does the one in Second and Commercial fit into the, is that yours?
Second, no.
It's south.
No, it's not.
It's south of the.
They're just, there's another one on First and Nash.
Yeah. Those are private.
So, so a lot of, Main Main Street had one, I'm First and Anamis, yeah.
Yeah.
Main Street kind of helped the artists get going on the community mural, which is over, it it's over by Moses.
Right.
And so it was just like community was participating in that. That's the only mural that Main Street was involved with. But then, a lot of other murals started popping up, so I think if there is one mural, they're gonna pop up. It's just.
So, the Main Street focus is Main Street and all that. Arts and Culture is the advisory commission to council. Where do they fit in? Cause this, it seems like art to me, and so how does how does that?
Where does Arts and Culture fit? Mm-hmm. So up to the, up till this year, Arts and Culture couldn't do murals. So that's why it was handed off to Main Street, cause they had to do capital improvement, like statues and that, it was, it, is it still in your bylaws?
Uh, well, Tara Marshall is the one who said that we were not allowed to do murals.
They only got capital projects. So that, but we're working very closely with with um Arts and Culture.
Who is advisory to council, so should they be bringing this forward to council before it gets out to the public as part of? And I don't mean that, you know, I'm just questioning the process, so that it comes before council.
So, yeah. So you you mentioned before that, well, nobody told us about this.
Right.
But because of the many different changes back and forth, we actually didn't know that we're supposed to come to and tell you. So we'll happily come and let you know what we're, what's going on, you know, or what we're, what we're hoping to do, and and where it's gonna be. If that's what the rules are, we're happy to.
So, is your group concerned about the number of murals that are just popping up in the community?
Yes, but the thing is, it's not something, if if it's a private building owner, they can put whatever they want on their building. If if it's already been painted, they can't.
I think, well, well, I don't know, if we have any ordinances.
Cause.
Yeah, I make this. So two weeks ago, I, uh, about two weeks ago, I came to a meeting here, and it was from the Co- uh Colorado History, History Colorado. And it was Historic Preservation of Downtown. So I think before we start painting murals, murals, we have to, are we gonna be a historic downtown? Or we're gonna be in, does, where do the murals fit in on Historic Preservation? They gave us a lot of pictures on towns that are getting Historic Preservation grants, and there were no murals on there. And if I remember correctly, and this is before I came on council, there's even an ordinance, if you remember, when Liz Torres painted the front of First Candy Store, can you remember what that ended up like? There there are certain, and I'm I'm, I apologize, I'm not knowledgeable about what that law states, but I know there's something in there that adhere within the corazón.
Right.
You, there's limitations on what you can do.
So, so what I, what I understand, cause I was just at Historic Preservation Meeting, that as long as, if if the building, if the historic brick has been painted, then you can put a mural on it. If it ha- and if, that that building probably no longer qualifies for um historic tax credits.
But the big, the painting, the paint could come off and it then wouldn't qualify.
I don't think so. I I don't think you can sneak it, I don't, you and I weren't at the same meeting, I mean, historical Historic Preservation of Downtown.
Oh, it sounds like that's something I wouldn't do, but.
Yeah, well, I, exactly. Uh, I know our HB district, uh, which this is in, uh, has some rules on facade and and matching, not necessarily painting, but uh, well, I think it does have to actually kinda fit within the the character of our historic.
And if there's nothing out there, one thing that we may consider is council is coming up with some ordinance to control that, if we have to.
Right, cause you're.
We had a sign ordinance too, which is nobody's favorite subject to talk about.
Right.
But, you know, there are limitations in that sign ordinance as well, and we talked years ago about tightening up that sign ordinance. And I think the the way it works is that if it's a product that is. And I think the, the way it works is that if it's a product that is being sold inside the store, there's very little in the way of restrictions. But you can't just splash the name of your company on the side of the building, there are a number of people who've known that.
Right, right.
You know, the thing that concerns me is that we have, you know, a lot of prehistoric buildings, or not prehistoric, but historic buildings.
They seem prehistoric.
Historic buildings, to put something that is a newer date, it, it kinda takes away from the historic facade of building, that's kind of what I'm, I'm.
I'll tell you, the, the, the town that I was in was Granby and there's two thousand people in Gran, that are full-time residents in Granby now. They, their median house range is five hundred thousand, so there are a lot of rich people in Granby, but anyway. So they, they didn't have anything for the tourists to see. So they, that's why they made the Rocky Mountain mural project and they put up eleven murals. And now they have people coming to town, shopping in the stores, buying stuff, because there's something to do, there's something for them to see. And I saw all the murals and some of our murals that we already have here are just as good as theirs. So then we can have a, the, uh, Arts and Culture is gonna make um an Art Block map, so you can, so then if we had tastefully done some murals around town that we could qualify as art and put it on this Art Walk, then we can get people walking around town and exploring Trinidad and shopping at the stores.
And I think those murals should maintain the character of our community.
I agree, I totally agree.
Right. Would that affect anything, Mike, like with, with the city, with the historic grounds and that, preservation and stuff like that, that would, that's another thing.
It's a possibility, I, I'd have to look into that.
Yeah.
It's looking to. And, and I definitely don't wanna squelch the enthusiasm because I, I appreciate all the boards and commissions and where they go and we just need to have uh this kind of a process that things get vetted out.
Can I ask a question? So what are we hoping to do at this meeting?
Well, we just, uh, this was brought up, somebody wanted it on the, on the agenda, so we brought it up. Partially to, I know that somehow we approve this, cause we got a DOLA grant to do this, right? So it, it came through the city staff or I don't know if it came to council, I don't know that, but anyway. I just don't want them moving forward with a huge mural, mural on Safeway that hasn't been brought before city council or the Arts and Culture Advisory bringing it to council and advising council and then the decisions be, you know, for all the.
I would suggest that rather than individual situations be adjusted, that we come up with some sort of a foundation of, 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 of understanding about what is and what is not allowable.
Right.
You know, uh, we could wind up with the, 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 the lepia problem. I mean, that was a miles long mural. And I don't know that we necessarily want or need that, it'll work well for them in the river, but it won't work as well for us all over town half-assed, I don't think. And if anything is taken from this meeting, I think is the need for some sort of a uh logical, um temporal kind of uh ruling expectation of what we're trying to accomplish by allowing them.
And we're also gonna have to give the property owners some kind of levity to what they may want on their building.
Right, and it, that's already been approved on this one.
But my thing is, you mentioned like Safeway, now that's a corporate entity and we'd have to have something in writing that demonstrates that they're committed to allow.
Mm-hmm. Right. Well, we're gonna have them fund part of it. I mean, it's not a done deal, we're just, we're just negotiating right now. It's tourism and Albertson's and our boards and commissions, we're working on that.
And just for everybody's uh information, I've been taking photographs of murals around the state for three years and there are some terrific ones, beautiful. And then there's some amateurish ones that you wouldn't want, and so I think the council should have some oversight as to what goes up and what doesn't. Somebody needs to judge, right? But if you wanted to, I could put together a slideshow of some of the murals around, all the smaller towns have them now, I haven't been to one community without a mural.
It makes people get up out of their cars and take a walk, basically.
And many are beautiful.
But I totally understand, we don't wanna just have stuff slapped up everywhere.
What I think with you, what I think is that this particular project you've already got funding for. And that's something, I can't remember if it did come in front of council, if it's already been approved. It was a lot, but it needs to come in council for approval and we move forward, but if that's what council decides to do. But I think anything else, I think we need to take a little more in-depth and, you know, look as to what we want to do going into the future with, uh, new news.
And can any of these fundings uh go towards repairing old ghost signs?
That would be Historic Preservation, which is also on the boards and commissions board.
But this particular grant that you received from DOLA, is it only for brand new murals or can it be to, you know, rest- restoration?
Yeah, it's, it's pretty much for adding new things to the city, it's beautification money.
And it's a small grant, it's very small.
Probably is.
Twenty-five hundred. Hmm?
Isn't it five thousand?
Well, we have twenty-five hundred from boards and commissions and twenty-five hundred from DOLA, so we have five thousand dollars just for that project.
Okay, well, I, I gotta tell you, I, I think that before we authorize any projects, you can see, we have to have a common understanding about what we're trying to accomplish, what we're gonna regulate. And I don't know that we need to be the artistic big brother, but content has a valuable place here and what is artistic to some people may not be appreciated by others. And we need to, and I'm not a critic of art, I, I wouldn't pretend to be, but at the same time, I'm, I recognize. That's why I think about maintaining the historic culture of our community, I think, that's my thought.
So on our boards and commissions board, we have Historic Preservation is on there and Parks and Rec and, and us too. And so we, we proposed this to them and they said, oh yeah, that looks good, you know, we like the place that's gonna be and what it's gonna be. So if, if we get approve it at that, at that board meeting, then we bring it to you guys, is that how you want us to do it?
Mike?
Because.
Yeah, Penny, we're gonna have to have, like, council is, we're gonna have to have a process. Um, I know that.
Just tell us what it is and we'll do the process.
I'll, I will.
We just don't know what process is.
Make sure the next boards and commissions, cause.
Okay.
Um, what we did was fund the boards and commissions, the marijuana, a hundred fifty thousand dollars. Which opened up uh for anybody to, to come forward and, and the boards and commissions, the chairs get together and talk amongst each other and, and they, you know, vet the projects out. But from there, I don't think the step is taken to bring it back to stat, well, the staff was involved, I just recently became involved, then to council, so. There's a disconnect there.
I think much foundational work needs to be done first, before we start entertaining any proposal. For a while, there, there was an idea of putting little sculpture flowers along sidewalks and stuff.
We got it.
Yeah, I know, but there was little, little consideration given for the obstacles for snow removal, the trip hazards, the, the, the threats, the, the threshold liability they presented, someone would fall on one. And it goes beyond just thinking, I like that, it's artistic, let's put it there.
Right.
We, we can't just do that, we, we are, the scope of our responsibility far exceeds artistic value, in my opinion. And I think that before we can do any individual entertainment of any project, we need to come up with some sort of a regulatory and appreciative kind of limitations and authorizations for what we are going to have in our community, otherwise it, it's, it's not gonna be right, in my opinion. Another project for the directors to kinda look at, to have ideas and bring it to council so we can consider. But also final say vested with council over any large murals that are going to be put in town? Kind of veto power?
Well, even on private buildings?
But it, you know, I guess what I'm trying to say is without the common understanding and, and for lack of regulation, these folks go through a lot of effort and work. And why aren't the funds that do all this to come here and say, no, that doesn't, we don't like that tonight, or we didn't like that next week, what do we mean? If, if we have, is allowed here, is not allowed here, buildings older than so much, you don't do it painted or otherwise. You know, I, I, I think that if, as you suggested, a paint, a painted wall, you can paint over it, but a painted wall could be removed. And you go back to maybe where you were in the prehistoric building. But I mean, so what, what are we gonna do next, put a mural on the north side of the Fox? That's not gonna happen, but we gotta be able to say that someplace, rather than have an individual decision made at a particular council meeting that we don't approve, that one. That's wrong and that opens us up to a whole lot of liability and litigation. How come I can't put a, a rising sun with swastikas in the artistic value here, when somebody else did a wagon train on the back of Safeway? I don't know. Yeah. I just, we, I just think we need to have a organized structural foundation before we proceed.
Uniform basis.
Sure. Okay.
Okay.
Let's go ahead with the form of the next item.
Okay, thank you.
We have, I have three marijuana third quarter resolutions. Time to, uh, for this, we have three hundred and thirty-eight thousand, two hundred dollars allocated. Or recognize allocations, any questions on any of the allocations?
I have a question. On the fire truck, it says for a hundred and forty thousand dollars, I thought it'd be a paid back total, is that per day equipment? This is for a new ladder truck that was approved through marijuana, it is two hundred and, no, it's seven hundred.
A third truck? Seven hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars.
That's the, that's the one we already bought, right?
Right, yes.
But it's recently, it's.
Right, these are, this is our debt service, okay.
Oh, okay.
Splendid buy.
You know, one thing I'd like to see, that it seems to be working with the ADO demolitions and the, uh, talking to Kent, you know, they removed some of the buildings here recently and um, it's good to see that this building, the dilapidated buildings are, coming down. Uh, don't, that cancer policy, what's that all about?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the uh, what's that? Oh, Dave could speak to it actually, thank you, Dave.
That's fine, yeah, I answer your question.
Nice.
I'm Dave Backer, if you don't know me, I think everybody does, but, um, I was tasked with this project. Couple of years ago, I took a fire officer one class and one of our tasks was researching cancer in the, in the fire industry. Um, last year, nationwide, sixty-eight percent of all firefighters are getting cancer at this point. Um, in two thousand and seven, the state of Colorado came up with a presumptive cancer bill and they would cover five cancers. Um, and it was covered under workman's comp, if you could prove that you got the cancer from the job. In twenty seventeen, they came up with this voluntary cancer award program. Um, and of course, it costs the city's money, two hundred and sixty-five dollars per member, per year. But the, the good thing about this one is, is that we don't have to prove that we got the cancer from the job, it's just, those five cancers that the state said, you know, will cover you on, it automatically covers those. And the max payout on this plan is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so we, we realize we're gonna kinda lose some money. Um, because under workman's comp, it could cost up to half a million, um, but we would run it under this plan and our health insurance that, that we get already, um, that we pay into. Um, and this was, I went through all the members and everybody decided, yeah, we'd rather have the presumptive voluntary where they automatically cover us and we don't have to prove we got it from the job. Um, because workman's comp, right now, I know a buddy of mine up in Aurora Fire, um, he just had like ten feet of intestine removed. And the next day, he got his letter from workman's comp saying he was denied because they don't belong to this plan. And so this takes a lot of stress off of the family and the individual that's trying to deal with the cancer, because they're gonna pay funds out in the first ten days and start covering some of those costs that are associated with, with trying to treat cancer. So this is something that us as members wanna kinda move to, if you'll allow us.
With all, with all due respect to the fire people and nine-one-one and the cancer and all that kinda stuff, okay? Recognize, reconcile for me, your initial comment that says sixty percent of all cancers, fire department, something with sixty percent firefighters acquire cancer.
Firefighters. Right.
Okay, and, and the inference or the understanding suggestion I appreciated from that was that, um, it's because of the nature of the work.
It, it is, and, and, and it's the fuels that are burning in, in the occupants.
But. I got it, but at the end of your comment, you said, it's not necessary to prove that you got it from the job, so there's a dichotomy there, how, how?
It, it's workman's comp, right, they don't wanna pay out the funding, right, it, it's pinnacle. They're gonna fight it tooth and nail to try and not pay that.
Every, everybody, insurance, I like that.
Right? And so, this is, this is a voluntary fund that's set up. Um, and it goes along with our cardiac plan that, that we're already a part of, it's the same group that's putting it together. We pay them annually, you know, um, and they keep it in a fund and then if you have cancer, you just fill out the paperwork and apply.
Can the same not be said for persons who work in electrical?
Well, maybe, maybe electrical has their own fund, I don't, I don't know what electrical does.
And, and I'm not trying to be argumentative.
No, and I, I guess where you're coming from.
It does seem unique, unique to fund a cancer situ, cancer policy, for lack of a better way to describe it, for a unique group of city employees. When there are, the police, yeah, well, I, I don't know about that, but if you get cancer working regularly, right on the floor.
Right.
I'm not trying to be cute, but you understand what I'm trying to say?
No, I, I, I get it.
I have a hard time understanding this expense for.
But I, I think, I think if there was that much, that many employees getting cancer, that somebody would step up and create a fund like this.
As you, as you are doing now.
Well, it's not me, this is through the state again, and, and this is a separate fund that just basically takes the burden of proof off of the individual. And you actually save money with this plan, so you, the city's actually getting a benefit by going to this plan. Um, right now, on workman's comp, thirty years after I retire, I can come back on the city and say I got cancer from the city and then I'd have to prove it, yada, yada, yada. This plan limits it to ten years, so after ten years, after I retire, I can't come back on the plan and, and say, I got my cancer from the job. Another thing it does is on our firefighting, uh, workman's comp insurance, you pay a little bit higher rate than anybody else in this city. Um, it reduces that because they don't file in that, those cancer payments under your workman's comp rate. So you'll see a return on this investment, both in your workman's comp rates and thirty years after I retire, it's cutting twenty years off of.
There's a question growing up, is this?
I don't, I don't know.
Then, is this a one-time?
It's, it's an annual, and that, and that's what I'm gonna ask of you.
So that, they shouldn't even be in here, they should actually be in the annual appropriations.
Well, I, you know, I don't know where you wanna put it in your budget, but, um, I figured it out, let me figure, I got a bunch of.
Is this something that might be applicable to union negotiations as well?
I would think so.
Well, and I, and that was one thing that I've been talking about, I, I talked to the last team, Andrew and me and Audrey have been talking. Our cardiac plan, we put in our union contract and that's, that's uh reimbursed a hundred percent through DOLA, the cardiac plan. This one, if you were a special district, would be reimbursed a hundred percent, but we're a municipality, not a special district, so we have to pay this. For seventeen members, annually, it's four thousand, five hundred and five dollars a year, I mean, it's, it's not a lot of money, um.
But that's for the cardiac?
No, this is for the cancer. That's what, that's what an extra it's gonna cost you a year to help us out with some health benefits.
Do the, do the firemen have any skin in the game on this, any of the cost of this?
Not at this point, that's why I'm gonna be funded on.
I think that we should provide it, and the reason why is it's such a low number, we have so many other requests from our other public safety sector and we, we don't bat an eye about. And here we have two thousand, two hundred dollars and this is to help protect us for future years and also protect our staff who goes out into fires when they do occur and also go and provide services for ambulatory backup or preliminary, depending on who gets there first, I, I think it's a no brainer.
And, and I was sitting back there thinking, I mean, you guys were talking about the animals, about purifying the air and stuff like that. This is if we get cancer, we haven't even talked to you guys about preventing the cancer from getting to us.
How prevalent is cancer in this department?
Uh, we've already had one guy die, ten years ago from cancer.
Um, have you had any insurance professionals, has somebody overlooked, looked over that policy to see if it's adequate for what you need? How did you find the, the plan?
The biggest thing with our members right now, um, and, and this is, this has been pushed since two thousand and seventeen through all the fire chiefs conferences, all the fire officer conferences, um. Through all the fire chiefs conferences, all the fire officer conferences, um. The biggest thing with firefighters is trying to fight and prove that you got the cancer from the job. I've been on the job twenty-one years, um, when I first started, we didn't even use AirPax.
I'm talking more about Dave, like, limits of liability, are you getting a good deal on it, or?
I, I, I think it's a good deal.
Is there a lot of exclusions on the policy?
No, I mean, if you pay your premium, you're in it, it, the only thing it does is it pays out per stage of cancer and what cancer you have. So, that, that's where the dollar amounts kinda change.
Is it under me?
It, it's not a company, it, it's, it's called the volunteer cancer award program, it's through the Colorado firefighter heart and cancer benefits trust. It's a trust fund through the state. It's not a company.
How much, how much?
Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, 'cause that's the max they're gonna pay out per member, per incident.
I wanna add.
Yeah, I'm just gonna add a couple of points, so, um, the heart, it used to be heart and circulatory trust fund. The city, um, that was a state mandate, that's why DOLA reimburses the city all, a hundred percent of the premiums. Unfunded state mandate, um, they've now changed to the heart and cancer trust fund. Um, I think some of the interesting things that are important to know about the, the plan and the cancers that it covers. Are, are the types of cancers that are covered, I, I think that, um. Maybe naively, we think the first one would be lung cancer, lung cancer is not covered.
Right, the five cancers are brain, skin, digestive, hematological, and genital urinary.
If you take a tier of occupation, the lung cancer would be number one with all the smoke and everything else.
And tha- the next cancer, they're, 'cause they're gonna add another cancer, they're finding to add another cancer to this, and the next one is gonna be breast cancer, still not lung cancer. That was my first question I asked the guy when I got ahold of him, I said, why is lung cancer not on there? Um, and he said, because if you're wearing a breathing apparatus, you're not getting lung cancer, right?
So, to, Dave and I had talked about this plan, and it, it seems like there might be a correlation, perhaps between, um. The fire retardant clothing that they have to wear, those sorts of things, rather than what they're actually inhaling. Um, because it's these kinds of cancers that they're finding in the sixty-eight percent of firefighters. Um, back to the budgetary item, this twenty-two hundred dollars. The plan here carries that, carries through up to the end of June.
Right.
So, this would start the plan in December, carry them to end of June, we have a budgeted line item in the twenty-twenty budget. For a policy for next year, starting July first, and carrying them through.
So, this is the one-time deduction?
This is to get us started this year.
Yeah, it's to start the policy, 'cause obviously, it's a consideration, um, oh.
So, this twenty-two hundred is just for the six-month period?
Yes.
So, in the year.
December through June.
Yes, that's a true statement.
Now, you were mentioning too, something about that, there was a reimbursement from the state?
That's for the heart.
That's for the cardiac plan.
Cardi- yeah, cardiac plan, that was then funded state mandate, it's hap- happened. Uh, twenty-fourteen, and we've been participating, 'cause it was mandated since that time. We file every year, um, and get the reimbursement back from DOLA for a hundred percent of the premiums. There's some criteria, there's criteria with this as well, employees have to be there five years before they're eligible, same with this, the other program. So, there's some criteria, there are not a lot of criteria, but, but it exists, but we can't hire a firefighter and. They go on the job, develop a form of cancer, and they're covered, it's not how it works.
So, all the firefighters that you have now would be, uh, in this program my life, or they don't have to be there five years?
They do have to be there five years, we have, we have two individuals right now that are not at their five-year mark.
Right.
But I, I'd like to get the total number for seventeen, 'cause that's our, that's our personnel, just budgeted annually. So, when they do come available, we just throw them on and it's already budgeted, and we're not overspending that line item, if that makes sense.
So, in any case, um, it's part of this marijuana sales tax for the quarter. If council's agreeable, we'll have it on the agenda as an actual agenda item to join the trust, um, for this purpose. And then, um, it would be included in twenty-twenty's budget.
I still don't understand.
And you'll see the plan documents.
Okay.
And you will see.
Yeah, we have to have a resolution saying you're adopting this plan.
Okay.
And then that's submitted to the trust.
Sort of life insurance?
It, it's not a life insurance, basically, we're taking it off of workman's comp and putting it into this trust.
And you're only getting two hundred and?
That's the max payout, but we're gonna be using our health insurance as well.
Right.
This just gets the money rolling, we don't have to go to court, spend money on lawyers, fight the city, and workman's comp saying that we got the cancer from the job.
And pay your bills while you're going through.
Right, yeah.
Twenty-two hundred dollars for seventeen guys is like a hundred and thirty bucks a piece.
Yeah, that's not.
That's for a half a year.
That's for half a year, like, from December through June. But for full year, it's what, five thousand, what'd I say? Four thousand five hundred and five dollars for a full year, for seventeen guys.
You know, I understand it's better than nothing, and I'm not against what you're asking here, I'm just thinking, you know, cancer sometimes is insidious. And it can take years before.
Oh, no.
Okay, so, you're, you're giving, you're gonna take two hundred and fifty thousand dollars instead of?
Instead of fighting?
Well, yeah, but.
I mean, in, in the end, I mean, how many people recover?
So, what hap- I mean, what happens when you're so sick that you can't work, then your health insurance benefits?
Oh, I know, we're gonna figure that out.
Okay, as long as you understand.
Oh, yeah, well, no, I put this all on the table to them.
Okay.
Everybody was in agreement, so you wanna go this way.
Figure it out in my own mind, which is the better way for you guys to go.
So, here's the other question.
Our guys think it's this way.
Here, here's the other big question I had is about, let's say you decide to go into retirement, and you develop the cancer down the road.
Up to ten years.
Up to ten years, you're?
After ten years, I can't come back on the city or workman's comp.
So, what's gonna happen is we have to include all retirees into the plan.
Right.
So, let's say in ten years, all the firefighters that you have now retire.
Well, we're, we're.
Will we hire new?
Yeah, we're pretty good, you only have about four guys, there should be a ten-year span, probably, between everybody. At this point, I would think, 'cause there's four of us now that are pretty close.
Just for ten years.
Yeah.
Just to get your understanding of as much as you possibly can.
Right, I mean, I'm available for questions, if you guys got questions, I can try and answer them, give you some.
Okay, you have other questions?
Gotcha, thank you.
Thanks.
So, okay.
Well, hang on, I, I still got other questions that can, to marijuana. Uh, we, we have in here also, uh, thirteen thousand five hundred dollars for the police department's canine officer, is that for the animal? 'Cause I, I think thirteen thousand five hundred is pretty low salary, um, is, is the cheap here?
It is low, that is for the animal and training.
Okay.
What about this, what's those safety tablets, sight docs, what's that?
Sight docs.
So, um, through our, uh, safety coordinator, we're having to do, um. I just lost the afternoon, basically, job site, uh, safety.
Job safety analysis.
Job safety analysis, thank you, JSAs, um, it's all paperwork. These sight docs are actually gonna get tablets for employees to do those, it'll actually walk them through the safety. They have to check off on the tablet that they completed those tasks before they do any, any project, um. It's also gonna help streamline everything, and, and we're gonna have a better accounting of safety. But along with safety, those, those, uh, tablets will also help us with our, uh, new metering project. The meter techs, their, uh, um, locate requests, and now, we have to. Uh, nine, uh, eight-one-one, you call in the locate, it used to be, uh, you had three days to do it. Now, by state law, we have to do our locates and then actually post to the site. If we do not do the posting to the site that we've completed the locate, we get charged every day for the locate not being there. So, right now, we're just doing it all via paper, we're, we're just generating a lot of paper, so that's what that is. And I think for ten thousand dollars, it's, that's the minimum cost.
I was looking at the PD SWAT gear in the past for forty-seven thousand dollars, do they not have something now, or is that just new equipment?
It is, it is new equipment, um, just for instance. On the last drug bust that we had that we announced, um, we couldn't actually call all the officers in. We had to look and see who had the up-to-date equipment, and send those there. So, it was like, really, we don't have the equipment for our officers, so, and I, I, if you look, this is heavy on equipment for, for the PD. And we don't, it's one-time shot, but it's getting them geared up with one-time money. You know, that's interesting, of course, I know that the county got it, and, and we can't bank on it, but have we ever gotten contacted with that new organization? Something like that, have we? I think, uh, I think Charlie has, and he actually has utilized it too. 'Cause I know the county has, we see some vests from it. Vests, uh, we hope to get, uh, reimbursement or grants for the vest, but this is to fully equip them at this time.
Are, are there ever vests that, um, I guess, if, if they're used but never, thankfully, not utilized? I mean, do they have like a shelf life where like polymers break down, things like that?
Yes.
They do?
They're largely integrated with.
Does it?
It's tightly woven and the weave loosens, as I understand.
I have a question, boards and commissions, looks like it totaled only seventy-seven-five? Or are you anticipating putting something in there in the fourth quarter?
We don't know, they meet every month, and they allocate, they make their requests and approve it and allocate. And at this point, they've only allocated seventy-seven thousand. And that includes the decked halls, it includes the charlie.
To the balance of the line?
It's, it's just gonna sit, if, we just didn't wanna allocate the whole hundred and fifty, and then we don't spend it.
I understand. And that could be a little bit of the money that if, usually the transfer that'll work to the admin shelter project.
What is Main Street for, thirty-three, six, you said that, the musical instruments, the paintings?
Oh, okay, right there, I was going to.
I'm sorry.
The Main Street group, what did they spend at thirty-three, six, eight?
Uh, the musical instruments were twenty-one thousand dollars of that, and we have them in storage.
And the, the horse, does that include the horse?
Uh.
No.
I believe the horse is fourteen thousand, but it isn't, it is. Kinda approved by the boards and commissions out of this money, but it, we haven't expended anything yet.
Then that means we could probably use from that remaining seventy-seven thousand, allocate towards the?
So, the horse was budgeted through arts, arts and culture, and it's ninety-six, eighty-one, I don't know about fourteen thousand.
That's the ring that was brought forward, and fourteen.
May include the, the concrete base, which is about four feet.
It's not, according to what I'm seeing now, I mean, I know they presented it to council, um. Tom had to, has to clear with CDOT, but CDOT is wanting a design on the base.
My, if I may, my understanding is that the horse and installation is fourteen thousand, that is without the base.
Oh, really?
In any construction or removal of the existing art piece and moving it, as well as the base. 'Cause we still haven't got even the base, uh, engineered, let's put that way. Which we have to do, and the engineering has to meet CDOT standards to get permitted.
So, this is their approved project so far, column F, um, and you can see here, spark preservation, arts and culture. Um, and Main Street's been the most active. We have their Fourth of July, the roundup, they're getting ready for decked halls. The horse, um, is closer to fourteen thousand dollars. That nine thousand six hundred and eighty-one dollars is from marijuana money. That, the balance comes from the money that the arts commission turned out, back over to the city.
There you go.
From a fund of checking income that they maintain, yes.
Oh, okay.
So, that's where the difference is.
Thank you.
Cheryl, I'm curious, how did, when do you get your first read on the fourth quarter of marijuana revenues?
January, I think it's, or, January twentieth is when they're, it's due.
Do they have payment on a monthly basis?
Yes, but we'll get des- December's payment, January twentieth. They have twenty eighth.
But what about October's payment?
October, we'll receive November, so, we'll get October, November, right.
The first read in November?
The, I'm sorry, yes, correct.
Any reason to believe that it's not gonna be better than last year?
It, it's probably, it's on target to be a little bit more than that last year, um, let's see where we are. So, right now, we're a hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars more than last year. Broke.
As of the end of third quarter, as of, as today?
As the end of third quarter.
Okay. And then we've got a need fourteen to fill in until the fourth, fourth quarter.
Okay.
Would you get us to a little over last year's amount?
Isn't she amazing?
Yeah.
So, it looks like actually there's a totally remaining allocation of ninety-one thousand. Uh, naturally, the entirety of the year that you anticipated, right?
Mm-hmm.
Something I wanted to throw out, like I said, this is, it, it doesn't really matter, but I just wanted to mention to this, mention to council this. Is that I know that we have given, uh, from the Fisher's Peak project, ten thousand dollars. And, uh, I know that we're trying to come up with additional money for the master planning process. And someone mentioned to me a while back whether we have more skin in the game, and I don't, you know, I don't, we can't come up with all of it, but. Maybe if we could consider at the end of the year, if there's money there, maybe an additional fifteen thousand dollars, hopefully we'd have like twenty-five thousand dollars. But that's not for a discussion for a day, too much, but just something for a few people.
Did you have a follow-up with, uh, DOLA?
Yes, they turned us down on that, and they, they didn't, they didn't fit into their criteria.
So, now, it's not just for changing it, Brad, we're talking about reapplying for something that connects to town.
Right now, 'cause right now, we have like a hundred and ten thousand dollars. Things to go over, perhaps, maybe five, ten, or whatever it is, so, we have a total of like a hundred and ten thousand dollars. But anyway, it's just something that maybe at the end of the year, we can have a discussion on. Does that be something that maybe you guys wanna consider, or just not?
I think we'd have to wait till that conference, well, you'd have to wait till the first quarter, pretty much, a point one. And you may not have all of us here, so, I have a question for us.
Okay, good talk, okay. Any other thoughts on, uh, MJ allocations? Now, moving on to our next item, which is budget. Uh, before we get into budget, uh, there is one item in there that, in my fact, I've discussed this with Mike, and I think I brought this up. Last meeting, um, in our budget, we're talking about that additional funding for the fire police. Uh, who was that, three weeks ago? And not the police, but that, uh. The state, uh, mandate, so, um. I received a bill from, uh, Debbie Wagner, and, and it passed the first steps to mandate. Uh, what the mandate says is, they wanna raise the, uh, retirement match. On cities from eight percent to twelve percent. That's four percent raise and a hit on all the municipalities, state mandated. I just heard from Audra that DOLA funded state mandated stuff, and I don't know if I'll come forward with that. In our budget, right now, the, through the police, uh, negotiations. We are at ten and a half percent match already. What's built into this budget is a two percent raise for all, all, everyone and a one percent match, so that would bring us to eleven and a half percent. So we will not take the hit that every other community has because we're already ahead of the game there.
As long as you don't have to go over and above, that's the question.
Right, no, no, I, I asked Debbie this morning, so the way I read that, it's twelve percent, they're trying to get everybody up to twelve percent match, which said, yes, I said, we're almost there. She said, well, you're ahead of the game.
Oh, besides Debbie, is there somebody else we can confirm that with?
Uh, yeah, I, I'd have to, but, um, yeah, it's, uh.
Can we check with C N L?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, uh, they, they had a discussion with the policy that you guys brought forward and.
Kevin.
They, they actually, yeah. C N L actually, uh, Kevin Barner wrote a letter to the legislators saying, hey, we kinda don't agree with this, we're, we're in opposition until you get more information from all the communities, so, um, I could.
Yeah, that's, uh, when I was at the last meeting, they opposed it until amended, so.
And that's how we followed up with the policy and the staff, voted for.
And that's the, the letter that is carried forward to the legislature from Kevin Barner.
Okay, that was my question, I want everybody to be aware of that, that was, you know, hanging out there, so.
Okay.
Okay, Cheryl.
So, uh, if you recall, last meeting we were turning fifty eight thousand dollars in the hole, um, with the changes discussed, um, um, what, suggestions of council, we went through and we pulled different, um, positions out. We just kinda followed, uh, council's direction and we were able to get it down to thirty nine hundred dollars.
Thirty nine hundred?
Thirty nine hundred. However, um, Donna gave me some updates on health insurance and that got eaten up real quick, so now we're, we're, um, we don't, uh, let's see. We're about six thousand to the back in the red.
Back in the red.
But it's gonna fluctuate like that, back and forth, at least it's manageable.
Mike, you had mentioned to me in our talk the other day that you, you guys had found something that was, that was offsetting the budget, what was that all about?
Yeah, and it's the Mounts and Raphael Hospital position, so, yeah.
Right. So it was about sixty three thousand dollars, I had removed revenue offsetting that position, I forgot to take out the position. So there's sixty three thousand dollar savings there.
Okay, okay. Now, I was gonna be.
What, what position is that?
They're, they used to provide security at the hospital.
Okay, yeah, I remember that.
And then Chief just doesn't have the manpower to continue with that contract.
Okay, so that does, that puts us in a better position even with that thirty nine or that six thousand, right?
Well, right, the thirty nine includes the sixty three thousand, so. Um, changes again, uh, let's see, because we eliminated that sixty three thousand dollar position, um, now the class and comp is only nearly twenty thousand dollars for PD versus twenty two, so anytime you move out a position, it's gonna change class and comp. Uh, when the dispatch communication director resigned or retired, the position was re-formatted to be a communications manager instead, so it's a different class and comp level. And it's, it's a less, lesser salary, so that saved us eighty four hundred dollars. And, and then just through the rest, I mean, if you went through my sheet, you'll see that we didn't re-budget the, the retiring positions in public works and fleet maintenance. And then we removed the assistant library director and rebudgeted as her permanent part-time position. The, the bold, the bold write, um, indicates the changes that we made from last time. Oh, one of the good, I notes, instead of the ten percent being budgeted out of marijuana, or of general sales tax to be recognized as one time revenue, we were able to increase it to fifteen percent, which is good, cause we tried to keep it at twenty percent, since should marijuana go away or dwindle, we don't wanna be counting on that twenty percent as, um, ongoing, so, anyways, we got it shaved back down to fifteen percent, and if that doesn't make sense, I can explain it. For the little brother, does anybody have any questions? Oh, do you want it explained, Les?
Yeah, could you please, yeah, budget for dumbies?
On the handout.
Yes.
You indicated to top, uh, dispatch, and I, did I understand you said that Rita had retired?
Yes.
Okay, and, and that's been redistributed enough, for the record, um, true that ambulance district is a significant user of radio airtime and the director refuses to contribute any money to the support of the, the radio system. And, uh, that cannot, I don't think continues to be in the future.
So when we had that meeting, I don't know if Audrey calls, it seems like if they were to step forward and put a portion in, it would be to help the counties share. And I don't know that that's true, but right now it's sixty percent on the city, forty percent on the county, and the county wanted ambulance to help them with the forty percent.
Makes sense. That. Okay, that sixty forty split for the total amount was at the time E nine one one was, was formulated, was to base primarily on population.
Right.
That the city would pay more because they have more people here and the county would pay less. I'm not proposing that the ambulance would pay in, in, to the sheriff's forty percent, I think they ought to contribute their own percentage, period. They're a significant user of radio time and, and on occasion, so are the volunteer fire departments, but they scream and holler about paying for click time. But they are less able to pay their part, I don't think, that, I, I do think they're probably less able to fund their parts than this ambulance district is.
But would we have to go back to the original agreement and amend it to reflect that they're paying an isolated percentage versus towards the county?
I think that at the time E nine one one authority board was created, the ambulance district was not a formidable entity unto itself as it now is. That was in nineteen eighty nine and I may be wrong and talking through my hat now, but what I'm trying to say is at the time, it was based primarily on city and county forty sixes. But now I think it ought to be people who use the airtime. And I recall a few years ago, there was some discussion about the ambulance district, talking about having state patrol out of Pueblo, communicate or dispatch with them, but they couldn't afford it. But it, it just flies in the face of everything that's in my mind logical, that users of airtime don't pay.
The big question is, is how do we get them, if, if, or how do we get them to pay?
I, I don't know, I just wanted to make that point.
That's nice, huh?
I think you obviously have to go to the voters because they're claiming from property taxes, over from their districts or whatever, and, and you would have to put something, I guess you'd want them to pay a portion as a result of their usage.
Well, yeah. And, and we're proposing.
A significant increase.
But again, that's probably, I hear.
Well, and, and this is part of the operations of the dispatch center is mostly, uh, wages, so.
Right.
That sixty forty is to help us defer the wages, um, I don't know if you'd have to go to the voters, the people for that. For the county, that's something I can, you know, definitely research, but.
So the county, the county's portion is roughly a hundred and eighty one thousand, um, and then we get the hundred thousand dollars from E nine one one. So the dispatch revenue is listed here, that's what we get, the forty percent to offset our costs.
Okay. I'm done.
There we be, oh, okay, so, let's see, um, I did indicate that we recognize the Fishers Peak master plan grant. It's a hundred and ten thousand dollars, ten thousand dollars match from us, and then twenty five thousand dollars from nature conservancy and transfer public plans. But we are recognizing the whole expense, because we'll probably be, we're the fiscal agent and we'll be making the contract with the, what is it?
Goco.
With, no, uh.
Oh, with the master planning, uh, or chance.
Yeah.
Consultant?
Consultant, thank you.
So with that being said, we have to come up with the money first and then we can get reimbursed from Goco or whoever.
Correct.
Okay, and.
So, yeah, we recognize the whole expense.
And where are we pulling that from, just as of?
Economic development is, um, holding the expense, and then I have it offset in state revenue, a hundred thousand I believe.
And when do we anticipate that payment to hit, then maybe the third quarter?
I don't know, it just depends on when this group gets going.
Well, right now, with it as the natural plan, we are going to be interviewing, uh, consultants probably in the next few weeks, and I'm not sure when they'll actually come on board, so.
Right.
It'll be after, it might be after the, the year or something.
Okay, let's see. Oops, and again, we, we didn't re-budget the shop supervisor position for fleet maintenance, instead we budgeted thirty thousand dollars to try to outsource that type of work. We don't know how that's gonna work, we have to go out to bid, see what it's, what we get for thirty thousand, we might have to readdress this next year.
If we, if we go over, then where can we pull those funds, say we have like some, a, a string of bad situations mechanically?
Up to the following budget. We would just, we would keep it in fleet, but would, it most likely come from, contingency would be at the patio.
Okay.
But our fleet, actually, our budget is coming down because of the new vehicles that we're starting.
It must be covered.
Yeah, it's been decreasing by about fifteen thousand a year, so that's good news.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And then for public works, the, we have somebody most ninety nine percent sure that they are retiring, so that would save about sixty thousand dollars, because we did not re-budget that position. Um, I don't, are there any other questions in the general fund?
I, I understand in terms of the dollars to retirement is a good thing, but what does that do with the workforce necessary to complete the tasks that we have assigned? Is, you know, I, it, it, we, people retire and, and I know they're gonna retire at a higher rate of pace, I don't think, and, but we have to replace people to still do the jobs. Am I making any sense?
Yes.
Well, okay, so if I'm hearing you right, as we hire on, people hopefully advance, you know, through the process and as, as they get older and retire, we're, we're training the people.
That's my point, we have a backup in against.
As we, our, our succession plan is not totally there, uh, but, okay, that's, I think that's what you're asking.
No, it, it is, it's just, as I was listening to what Cheryl was saying, in my mind, I was thinking, it's a good thing, we're saving because these people are leaving. I think, yeah, but it's a bad thing because now we have one less, one less people, one less people to do the.
These people are leaving.
So what our solution was year before was to bring on more seasonals to cover that position that we didn't budget last year.
Okay.
However, we brought on all the seasonals and still filled the position that wasn't budgeted, so we're gonna try and do it again this year.
Right. Right, yeah.
We gotta wanna come to the party with a brilliant idea, sounds like your idea, right?
Okay, so we're, we're in range of where we need to be. Again, there'll be little tweaks here and there, um, if council's okay with this moving forward with the two percent, one percent, that's gonna change, um, it'll pool that two hundred and whatever was sitting in the city manager's budget. And it's gonna put it to every department, um, you know, it's gonna allocate it to each department, because it's really tough to put everybody's retirement in and then, then you go and change it and it's a lot of work, so you just lump it all together in the city manager's budget. But once we do that, it's gonna, you know, these are, this two hundred and thirteen's rough estimate, it's gonna pull it in more and more than what it's gonna be.
And along those lines, uh, the, uh, been negotiating with the union, of course, they came in high, uh, we came somewhere in the middle as far as negotiations and working out. I will have to bring something forward to council, but I wanna meet with them and if you're good with this in principle, then, then we can, you know.
So Cheryl, our, uh, overall budget then is just that forty eight, seven seventy eight?
Yes.
Is that what you were, that was the question I had the last time, was it forty two something last time?
Right. Right, and the, the change is meter project, so we're kinda guesstimating what the meter projects can, how, where we're gonna finish this year, how much we have to carry forward next year, so. That number, Mike, we still have to simplify, could increase a little bit more, just depends on how far along we are with the project by December.
Are you, in your, in your forecast, are you assuming that meters are revenue?
Um, you're, she's actually budgeting for, based on the, uh, investment grade audit that J C I did and, and gave us numbers that, yeah.
Right, we talked about that this afternoon.
They gave us those numbers and Cheryl has recognized those in each department.
That's correct, so, let's see. Oops, that's really small. So I have, uh, the meter, the electric meter savings, what I've budgeted is what our debt service is, because they guaranteed that we would make enough revenue to cover our debt service.
Right.
And just, right.
Yeah, it could be hard. And I've done that in each depart, in each, uh.
Yeah. Question, um, this is about for the twenty twenty budget, this is our twenty nineteen budget, I know like last year at the end, they don't even go into the, we had to take money or, you know, from somewhere else to balance that budget, because we had over expended, do you anticipate that happening next, this, at this point in time, does, what does it look like?
I.
That would be a question for you, I may, I may answer it if you're.
So that, that would be a budget amendment, and I, I really don't have anything significant right now.
Right. If you can kind of maybe a different meeting if you have some idea.
Well, I would have to get it to you by, that's a, is that an or, yep, that's an order, so I'd have to have that first.
That's an order, so we have to have two readings before, yeah, so be ni, be nice enough, we are anticipating that coming up.
Mm-hmm, I don't think so, because it was really marijuana, that's what we had to transfer out, and whenever there's a transfer, that's a budget amendment.
Good. Right.
And if I'm correct, last year, I remember we had, I think, I mean, I may have misread something, we had a total budget of expenditures of like fifty one million.
Mm-hmm.
And this year we're at forty eight, so we have approximately three million give or take and, uh, less expenditures at this point. Are we planning to have a higher revenue stream for twenty twenty than we did for twenty nineteen?
That number there is actually very high, the, for two thousand nineteen, because of the meter project. The prior year it was much lower, um, I just, I can bring that one in.
I think like forty, like prior year it was like forty six.
Something around there, so we're kinda bringing ourselves right back down to where we normally are, and again, because of the meter project, we tilted up by what, four million dollars?
Almost, well, between gas and the meter project, it was, uh, close to five million.
Four percent.
And with the metering project, we have the hopeful anticipation that we'll be gaining more funding from revenue streams from those utility departments because of more accurate metering.
Correct, and that's where you see the smaller meter savings.
Right. And I'm gonna say not hopeful, it's a guaranteed energy performance contract that they're, they said we were gonna save this, so.
That's our.
Um, if, if it comes in lower, then we're gonna call J C I in and have to figure it out.
Okay. Digital chop, um, so I guess one of the things that I just wanna make sure is that staff is adequately facilitated with the amount of people that they need in order to perform their jobs. I don't wanna be overburdening our staff with having more people come on, and I'm gonna put this out there, I know we have about a two point one million dollar marijuana, you know, contingency fund. I would make a proposal that if we have those discrepancies where we need it, use ten to fifteen percent of it to go towards, which I feel is an infrastructural need, our staff. If we need to fill fleet positions, that way someone's not overburdened with someone else's previous duty that is no longer there, or if they are just overwhelmed. I think that we need to seriously consider that it is a hit for us, I know people don't wanna dip into our money for savings, but I feel that it is an infrastructural need, just as valuable as our plumbing, electrical systems. I think our staff are very important and I would like to just put that out there, if we need staff, I think we should allocate it for people, so that, make sure that they can facilitate their duties without being overburdened with the regular mundane situation when they come in and they have something else piled up on their desk and they need to be able to facilitate that first before they can get on to their regular duties.
How is staff handling with, with work now?
Um, we're, uh, staff is great, that's what I'll say, they're, they're handling it, there's, uh, a lot of stuff new, there's a lot of, uh, daily stuff that happens a lot more now that, uh, people are stepping up and covering, I understand what, uh, Nelson Wolf is saying, um, I just wanna be mindful that we don't want to bring people on based on marijuana funds and then when they go away, we have to lay them on, um, but I, I get it and, um, we haven't, we haven't hired, uh, you know, a development services person. we haven't, we haven't hired, uh, you know, a development services person. We had a public works director that was proposed and advertised, we didn't do that, uh, we're managing. But it's, I'm not gonna say it's, uh, cake block, nobody's sitting in city hall drinking coffee like...
Oh, yeah.
Leaning on shelves and all that, you know, the guys in city hall, the guys in the field, we're on it.
Oh, that's something that you'll let us know.
So, and real quick, I've listed what the budget amounts were for each year. Forty-six point eight for two thousand eighteen, and then fifty-one for the meter project, and now we brought it back down to forty-eight. And again, forty-eight includes some meter projects.
Right.
So we're not finished, I'm hoping to say we're about sixty percent?
Sixty, yeah. Okay, any other questions?
I have a question, Cheryl. So if that penalty she passes for the enterprise zone, for the landfill, is it gonna affect the...
Yes.
Up or down?
It, it's gonna take general fund down, about fifty thousand dollars, so...
Revenues?
Right, it'll take revenues down, mm-hmm.
So that's gonna force the hand of having to have a discussion about rates, rates.
Yeah, it looks similar to that.
How many? It could, yes. Well, no, not for the landfill, it's the general fund that's effective. The general fund, we'd have to come figure out fifty to seventy-five thousand dollars, you know, to cover expenses.
If you're... Because now, if, if it's approved and it's an enterprise zone, we...
It's isolated.
Actually, it's isolated, and then the landfill, being an enterprise, will have to pay payment, uh, taxes like the other utilities, and we'd have to, you know, this, gonna be a process, we'll see what the voters think. ID support as well. Neutral.
Good answer.
Uh, yeah, I, I, okay, any other questions, I'm excited.
That's right, very good answer.
I would like to just make the motion that, or not motion, I can't, sorry, the, I'd like to make the notion, sorry.
You can, you can.
Wrong about her, um, that we just kinda hold off until the next, uh, portion to finalize anything from staff until after the election.
As far as...
To find out about the capital improvement tax, uh, voter approval or non-approval, the capital improvement portion.
Okay, cause, so...
It would come naturally anyhow, cause we have to...
Yeah.
Is that the timeframe?
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm gonna track the days.
Yeah, it's...
It would come naturally, though we'll have to adjust it.
Yeah, right.
Whatever happens.
So as far as scheduling, we are looking, well, we're hoping to maybe have the first reading of the budget November sixth, but, uh, it might have to work till the nineteenth, the second, uh, meeting in November, that way we're not rushed at the end of the year to try and get two readings in, so, um...
I'd say that's worked pretty well on track, it sounds like.
After tonight, feeling comfortable with where we're at, yeah?
Yeah.
So it shouldn't be a big problem.
It's possible, it could be presented on the sixth, but...
That'll be a Wednesday.
I, right.
Well, the fifth is election, and usually you don't wanna have, council usually wants to do the next day.
Right.
Okay, got you.
But Mike has been a little bit busy, and he hasn't really sat down a little.
You tell, you sort...
So, but I feel, feel good about utilities, so should we get that meeting in tomorrow or Thursday, we could present on the next meeting. And I'm having a feeling that we're not gonna present till second meeting in November.
Okay, on to item five, discussion of sale or transfer of city property. Mike, did you get that with the...
I actually did get, uh...
Time out.
Can we take a break?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I've had...
I believe I'll avail myself, excuse me, sir.